Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. Welcome to those here and those tuning in over the TV or Internet to watch our meeting. My name is Colton Newt. I'm the Cholo High School Student Body President, and we have some members of our student council here tonight filling in for different, or shadowing different city council members. We have Carissa Barb, our Student Body Secretary. We have Teagan Sterns, our Student Body Treasurer. Nolan Jeffs, our Spirit Leader. Ben Dyke, our Senior Class President. Joe Shinkie, our Senior Class Google Scout. And Brookley Simpson, our Senior Class Vice President. By looking around, I can see that all of our council members are here except Councilman Kelly, who was asked to be excused. We'd like to start off with a word of prayer if we, for those who wish to join and stand. Mayor Seymour, can you start us off with that? And then afterwards, Mayor, or Councilman Hatch will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand for the invocation.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the privilege we have to meet together this evening. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have youth in our community who are interested in government and for the opportunity we had today to be with them and to be able to shadow some of the things amongst our city staff and different people in our community. Father, we pray that Thou bless these young men and young women as they continue in their lives that they'll be able to realize the influence of freedom and liberties that we enjoy as citizens of this great country. Father, we're grateful for the moisture that we've received in our land here and pray that it may continue, that we might be able to have blessings that come from that. We're grateful for the privilege we have to deliberate items tonight on our agenda. We pray that we might be able to do so in accordance with Thy Spirit and Thy mind and will. We're grateful for the citizens in our community, and we pray that Thou will bless them and help them and those that may be suffering or have cause to mourn, that they'll be comforted. Father, we give Thee thanks for all that we do have and these many blessings we ask for, and give Thee thanks in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. The next item we have on the agenda is the call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual city council members may, one, respond to criticism made to those who have spoken, two, ask staff to review a matter, and three, ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Okay, and since nobody has come to the call of public, we're going to move on to the next matter, or we're going to close call to the public. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation by the Navajo County Emergency Management. County Supervisor Steve Williams here is, Steve Williams is here to present that, so if you want to turn the time over to him.
Mr. Mayor, council members, shadow council members, it's good to be with you. I'm Steve Williams from the County Board of Supervisors. I'd just like to compliment the high school students that are here. I watch each of you in your sporting events, and then some of you were in the play that just ended, The Seven Brides vs. Seven Brothers, and it's fun to watch you succeed. So you're the younger, just as good-looking version of the current city council, but up and coming. We're excited to be here with you today. This week is the National Wildfire Community Preparedness Day on May 7th. As you know, our wildfire season is unfortunately alive and well, and in fact, we're, have a higher-than-average number of wildfires that have already broken out here in this region above normal. But we're here today, I'm here with Katrina Jenkins, Mary Springer, and Adam Wolfe from Navajo County. We're here to have a presentation on forest restoration. And so, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Adam Wolfe to come up and begin that presentation. Adam's our Communications Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me today. As I was just introduced, my name's Adam Wolfe. I'm the Communications Manager for Navajo County. This is just a presentation we've been taking to the various cities in the area to show the value in forest restoration, both economically as well as just what it can do to protect our community. Obviously, I'm not Chairman Jason Whiting, but I'll do my best. All right, so catastrophic wildfires, anyone who's been here for an extended period of time has lived through one. I grew up in this area. I happen to be here for the rodeo fire. My family was evacuated, not something I ever want to live through again. You know, you're listening to the radio hoping you don't hear your house or your neighborhood got burned down. So they are the single largest threat to our community, and it's something that unfortunately, nine out of 10 times is avoidable. As you can see, the larger picture there is the wallow fire, our more recent catastrophic wildfire, and then the rodeo fire on the right. Another issue that comes up with wildfires is sedimentation. It ends up getting into the watersheds, which becomes a huge threat to that. In an area where we rely so much on water, obviously, we can't afford to have our watersheds disappear as well from sedimentation. So how does forest restoration stop catastrophic wildfires? Well, get a little, get rid of a lot of those little trees that the fire loves to, you know, go light that up and then get the bigger tree. As you can see in the pictures, picture there on the left is before forest restoration, the fire is able to reach the top of the trees, it's able to spread very quickly. On the right, that's after restoration. We've cleared out a lot of that underbrush. Fire stays on the ground, it's much easier to put out a grass fire. So again, why is this important to our communities? In this area, we're pretty proud of our pine trees. I'm aware of that, and try to get my dad to move his pine trees, he will give you a talking to, that's for sure. But it is important, and it's also important to show that, so it's extremely crowded if we don't, and that underbrush is really what can cause a lot of those fires to really take off. But, a little behind. There we go. So that's immediately after restoration. You can see, there's still plenty of trees out there, but it cleared out a lot of that easy brush that likes to light up quickly. And it's also very sustainable. Catching up. So this is two years after a treatment. It's very easy to keep that small growth away. And then this will be five years after the treatment. It's very easy to just do a controlled ground fire. Again, keeps that area clear, avoids these catastrophic conditions.
Another good way is to put cows out there, they eat that grass pretty good, too.
There you go. And what it does is it really makes a stabilized, functioning ecosystem that is, as I mentioned, very easy to maintain and helps protect our communities to make sure those catastrophic wildfires don't come through. There are also added benefits economically to forest restoration. Protects our watersheds, as we mentioned, without that sedimentation coming in, it's much easier to keep our watersheds safe. It can restore our grasslands. We're getting there. It can also revamp the logging industry. Obviously, we are still removing trees that are smaller, but the logging industry has come a long way, and we can actually do a lot more with those small brush ponderose trees. We don't need to just cut down the larger ones. And if we're logging, of course, that provides jobs at the sawmill, you've got to do something with them. And it can also create new opportunities in areas such as biomass, which is coming here in a sec. There we go. As well as expand our energy development, which is, you know, an issue becoming increasingly more important to our region. So these are just some of our achievements so far with forest restoration. We've been able to do a lot of work with reservoirs around the area, as well as just really help protect our communities. And the bottom line is that doing nothing puts our community at risk. There really is no, if there's a fire, there's only one, there's a fire. So now I'm going to bring up Mary Springer and Katrina Jenkins, and they're going to go through steps to take when, if a fire does occur.
Thank you, Adam. The picture is in the last segment that he just showed you, that was a fire this year, that was in Clay Springs, and that was in the junipers and the grasses, and it was 592 acres. So, and that was early March, I believe. So, you know, it's still a threat to us, and it's in areas that shouldn't be as much of a threat, but it is. And so we all really do need to pay attention to that. So we have four mission-critical areas, and one is mitigation. We look at different ways that we can put plans together and work with communities in order to pinpoint the things that we need to do as a community to make it safer. And the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is one of those. We've been working with our partner agencies, local fire departments, local cities and towns, the Forest Service, Cooperative Extension, and that, we have two plans coming out on Monday for public review. There'll be a link on our website, and people that want to read through the plan and see how we've updated that. But what the Community Wildfire Plan does, it provides a mechanism whereby the fire districts and the fire departments can go get hazardous fuel mitigation grants. And so it's a really important document to keep that updated and make sure that we've taken into consideration any growth in what they call the WUI, which is Wildland Urban Interface. You know, how has growth into those pine trees occurred, and what do we need to mitigate that? We also have Firewise Communities, and we have one. It's in Pine Top Lakeside. We're looking to help beat the drum a little bit on that and see if we can't muster some more interest in Firewise Communities. So we'll be working a little bit more with our fire districts, seeing what we can do on that end. And there is also a local Firewise Assessment Course that people can go through. We just had one in Pine Top Lakeside, and what it does, it teaches people to go back either to their own property or their neighbors, working as a community, and say, what do you need to do? What kind of ladder fuels do you need to remove to make your home and your community The next area is preparedness, and I think most of you in the room have heard about the Ready Navajo County Emergency Notification System. That is something that we have been going from top of the county down to Cibacu and everywhere in between, trying to let people know that there is an emergency notification system. It is something that can work and to have people sign on, so if we were to have an emergency, we are able to notify folks and give them instructions, tell them about evacuations or shelters, things that people need to know, but they don't always get either on the radio, the newspaper is a little bit too slow for an evacuation. So this is kind of an immediate thing, and we're partnering with communities, sharing that information. Ready, Set, Go, I know the fire districts and departments and us, we educate the people in the community on Ready, Set, Go, what you need to do to prepare, whether it's a wildfire or whether it's something that you have to prepare for because you're snowbound in your house. Ready, Set, Goes means having the things you need, so you either can exit or take care of yourself for the first three days. Media support, sheltering plans, emergency operation plans, and training and exercises are things that we do as community all across the county to prepare for the what-ifs, because the what-if does happen. We are currently working with a vendor called Bold Planning on an emergency operation plan, and I was really thrilled, we had a kickoff meeting on Tuesday last week, and just about every city and town was represented at that meeting. So we're really excited about that, and we'll be working to put robust plans in place for the what-ifs. And response, I'll tell you, this community really supports response. We work together as partners. There's not one agency up here that can do something alone in the rodeo Chedaski or the wallow fire. There were so many folks that partnered up to take care of the communities that were affected. It's just amazing. I happened to see Dave Sherman in the Salvation Army, I mean, we were all partners in that, fire districts, law enforcement, everybody. So we do come together. One of the things we do is we have a weekly teleconference called the White Mountain Fire Restrictions Working Group. And that group gets together weekly, we started in April, and we take a look at what are the conditions out there as we progress through fire season. We want to make sure that if we are recommending to the councils or our boards that fire restrictions are required, that we do it with intelligence and science behind that. It's not a whim, and it's not a guess, it's based on what's going on and how at risk our communities are. So we really do that with a thoughtful process. And we work under statewide mutual aid compacts. We all kind of partner with the state, and we go through training and exercises together. And then if something were to happen, we do have a recovery plan. We work with our other NGOs, different government agencies, each other, because all events happen, and they're local. They may explode and include other communities, but they start local, and they end local. So it's really us that has to make sure that our communities survive, and we have to have the plans in place to do that. So all these folks are partners, and we're here just to kind of give you a glimpse of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis as a community. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Can this young man ask a question?
All right. What qualifies as a Firewise Community?
A Firewise Community is one that has gone through the education as far as what are hazardous fuels, what types of things you need to do to harden your home, and the steps, not just going through the education piece, but actually going through the actions and doing that. So as a community, it's not just one home, it's the community that gets together, that helps each other evaluate, so that if you did have a catastrophic fire come through, your home might be safe, but if your neighbor's home has all these fuels that fuel a fire, it'll burn your house, just the heat alone will burn your house. So the community comes together, they get educated, and then they conduct the work it takes to make sure that they've made it a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. If there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any other questions from the council?
And we would just, we know that the items that were presented today to this council are already a joint priority with your council and the county. I just wanted to express on behalf of the county our appreciation for the great partnership we have. Vice Mayor, did you have a?
Yeah, I do have one. Where's the website to sign up for the alerts? Isn't there a county website?
For the Ready Navajo County?
Yeah. I just noticed, I was hoping it was going to flash there at the end, and I didn't see that, but...
Well, thank you. You know, sometimes you get tongue-tied and you forget. We actually brought brochures, and they're back on your counter here, but if you go to the Navajo County website, in the lower left-hand corner under the quick links, you click on Ready Navajo County, and it'll take you and walk you through. And the brochures that we left on the counter, they're real, they're an eye chart, but they actually give you the information, where to sign up, what to look for, what to click on. And then our numbers are on that, Katrina and my phone number is on that, so if somebody either can't navigate or doesn't have a computer, they can call us and we'd be happy to sign them up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. We would hope that everyone watching would visit that website and sign up for those alerts. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to present to you, and thank you for the ongoing partnership we have, and we appreciate all that you do.
We appreciate all that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Do any items need to be pulled? Okay. Item A, proclamation by the mayor for Drug Court Month. Item B, proclamation by the mayor for National Salvation Army Week. Item C, consideration of Nicholas Homestead Park Ballfields Turf Renovation Project. Item D, consideration of amending resolution number R 2016-07. And item E, consideration of minutes of Cholo City Council meetings. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? I motion for Councilwoman Kokavas to approve the consent calendar as presented. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passed six to zero. Okay, I will now read the proclamation for National Salvation Army Week. Whereas, following a dream of ministering to those with physical and spiritual needs, evangelists William and Catherine Booth founded the National Salvation Army in 1865. And whereas, through countless acts of service, members of the Salvation Army continue the compassionate tradition of helping wherever there is hunger, disease, destitution, and spiritual need by providing shelter for the homeless, food for the hungry, self-sufficiency for the disabled, rehabilitation for substance abusers, and education for impoverished children. And whereas, the Salvation Army provides humanitarian relief and spiritual guidance in 125 countries around the world, and serves more than 28 million Americans in need each year in 5,000 communities nationwide. And whereas, the Salvation Army has been faithful and lovingly serving the citizens of the city of Cholo and the entire White Mountains. And whereas, the Salvation Army is celebrating the 62nd Annual National Salvation Army Week, which was declared in 1954 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower, as a time to honor the organization's work done on behalf of the poor. And whereas, the city of Cholo urges all citizens to support the soldiers and outreach ministry of the Salvation Army. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Darrell Seymour and of the Cholo City Council, I do hereby proclaim May 9th to 14th, 2016, as National Salvation Army Week, dated this third day of March 2016.
Mr. Sherman and those that are with you would like you to come up at this time, and we congratulate you for this and for the service that you do. Receive your proclamation.
You guys can stand, you guys can stand.
You're welcome to shake the hand and comment if you'd like.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm going down the road. Thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I see you guys.
Good to see you again. Thank you for your service.
Would you like to take a word, any of you, please? We'll give you a moment to, say two minutes if you'd like.
David, let's see if we can get that dog to talk. You forget I'm a preacher, so. I just want to thank the council, mayor, and the students that are here. This was a surprise, I had no idea there would be students here. It's an honor to do what we do, and we are just really honored by this proclamation for a city to honor our organization, our church, and all the things that we do. It's just nice to be recognized, and we will continue in service no matter what. And I hope that the previous presentation doesn't happen this year, but if it does, we're ready, we stand ready, we work very closely with the county and all these kinds of things. But we are honored to be here, and we thank you again for this, this is going on the wall.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item tonight, our next item is 8A, consideration of an application submitted by Roy Allen Biddle on behalf of the White Mountain Bay Submarine Veterans for Special Event Liquor License, 2016 Cruisin' the Rim Car Show on June 3rd and 4th at the Frontier Fields. Ms. Krosoczka?
Thank you, Mayor. Roy Allen Biddle, who represents the White Mountain Bay Submarine Veterans, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 2016 Cruisin' the Rim Car Show, which is scheduled for June 3rd and 4th at Frontier Fields. The license will allow the submarine vets to sell alcohol during the two-day event, and as you see, we attached the map, which shows an existing six-foot chain-link fence which surrounds the entire field, and that's where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. There will be one main entrance and exit, and that's the only entrance that participants can enter or leave, and it will be manned by, it says Quarter Security Services, they did get bought out, so the new company is known as Guardian Security Arizona. There is a second gate that you'll see, it's used by the car show participants, but it will be locked and only opened when a vehicle enters or leaves the area. And it will be monitored still by a car show volunteer to ensure no alcohol is either brought in or leaves the premises. And there will be additional personnel, excuse me, hired by the car show organizers that's going to patrol and monitor the entire area to ensure there's no underage consumption. We did have the police department perform a background check on Mr. Biddle, found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. With your motion, we will send that action to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, and it is the department that then decides to grant or deny the application. Mr. Biddle is going through some medical issues, so there's another gentleman here to represent him on his behalf, his name is Mr. Hughes, and if you have any questions of him, he is here to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of council on this at all? Vice Mayor?
If nobody's got a question, I got a motion. I move to approve the applications submitted by Roy Allen Biddle for a special event liquor license for the 2016 Cruisin' the Rim Car Show on June 3rd and 4th at Frontier Fields in downtown Cholo, Arizona.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I have a second by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? I'll just share that I vote no for this, the same reason that I did on the Cholo days. Last year, I voted yes for this because they had a beer garden, and I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with the entire part being turned into that. So I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that that pass, see that that pass five to one. Thank you. Next item is item 8B.
Okay. Consideration of Award of Construction Contract for City of Cholo Rehabilitation and Rejuvenation of Public Roadways. Slurry seal, City of Cholo, project number R 0416. Shane Hemmingsaw?
That's good. Good evening, Mayor and councilmen, students. The 2016 Capital Improvements Program included funding for rehabilitation and rejuvenation, or R and R, of city roadways utilizing slurry seal. City's current pavement preservation plan includes a minimum maintenance of crack filling, patching, and resurfacing every city street every six years. City crews have completed, or are working to complete, the crack filling and the patching repairs in the areas identified for this year. Rehabilitation includes furnishing on labor, equipment, materials required to place approximately 262,000 square yards of slurry seal on selected city streets and applying pavement markings after the slurry seal has been placed. An additive alter number one was included in the bid to upgrade the normal type-two polymer-modified slurry seal to a slightly thicker type-three polymer-modified slurry seal in the more heavily-traveled Wilford Road and South Central Avenue. An added alter number two is also included to install a fog seal on the newly repaved Cholo Heights subdivision until they can be worked into the pavement preservation schedule based on funding. Engineer's construction cost estimate for the work was $393,000. The invitation to bid was published as required and sealed bids were open publicly on April 15th with the following results. I'm gonna go ahead and just read the total of all the base bid and the adults. Southwest Slurry Seal, $327,874. American Pavement Preservation, $355,072. VSS International at $380,000. Via Sun Corporation at $396,266. Inner Mountain Slurry Seal, excuse me, at $449,983.50. Staff recommends awarding the base bid and added alter number one and two for the 2016 R and R Slurry Seal construction contract, city of Cholo, project number R 0416, to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $327,874. The bid tabulation is attached. I believe there's maps as well of the areas identified and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I know it's maybe nitpicking this when they do the slurry seal, but I think the one thing that kind of gets me is they, I think they do a good job with the slurry seal, but it's the striping that seems like, I know we've talked about the striping in the past and we've upgraded, apparently, I know I've heard this a few times, that they've upgraded, made it better. I know striping, it is what it is. The road could look good, but the striping could look terrible. I've seen it peel off. I just, I don't think they take, I don't know anything about asphalt, but it does seem like they use the right product. It seems within a month, it's gone, it's peeling up, it's wore out. So I know that's kind of nitpicking on a $300,000 project, but still, I think it needs to be done a lot better than we've had in the past.
You know, we usually bid like a water-based paint with glass beads and those glass beads are distributed down and sealed in the paint. There are more expensive paints, epoxy paints, thermoplastic that are really raised. You see those in the valley. It's much more expensive. Those are also harder to resurface again. Those thermal paints need to be sandblasted off before we can resurface. So we often not do those on the mountain. Typically, those get removed with snow plows, too. There are other options out there for painting. We typically stick to the waterborne. There's areas that we probably need to do more application more frequently, especially with the cinders that we add now during the snow fighting season. It's just, it's hard on the paint and the plowing will just eats that paint off the roadways. And I agree with you that maybe there's some areas, especially on the busier roadways, that maybe need to be given more attention more often with paint.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you. Is this Southwest Slurry? Are they the ones that's been doing most of the slurry for us here in the last couple of years or are they a different group?
They have done work here in the past, but it's been quite a few years. Although usually American Pavement Preservation, I think they've got the last three years in a row. So this is a, we haven't worked with Southwest Slurry for a handful of years, but they have done work up here on the mountain before. I believe they're based out of the valley.
Are they gonna be doing the same thing as maybe last year? If the weather gets bad and they slurry your road and it's terrible, they're gonna let us go ahead and get back in where they can touch it up and everything else?
Yeah, in the contract documents, it's on them to shut down their slurry seal operations in enough time if any weather moves in. And if any damages happen based on not doing traffic control or weather, they have to repair that before they leave.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crittenden?
We're ready to make a motion if you're.
Okay, we have one further question by the Vice Mayor.
So I'm sure you've probably looked into this when you made that comment that it's cost us more money, but if it lasts longer, I'm sure you guys have looked into that. If we're doing it three or four times a year on some of the main artery roads, striping these, but it could cost us more to do it once. I'm hoping we've looked at that. I'm looking at you, Bill, because I know you researched this a few times. Mr. Cupp, I'm sorry. I know we've talked about it a few times, but if we're spending, if we're doing it three or four or five times a year, are we looking into if we do it once or twice a year? With something more expensive?
Another challenge we have up here on the mountain is actually getting a striping contractor that will show up and do the work. We've had a lot of difficulty even when it's been bid as part of our slurry seal to get the guy up here and really the reason for that is there's just not enough quantity to make it worth these guys' time. I mean, the striping contractors are used to doing 100 miles of road and then turning back around and painting the other side 100 miles. So for the small amount we have, we have a difficult time. Staff has been looking at options. We were at the Roads and Streets Conference last week and looked at some relatively inexpensive equipment that the city could own and take care of those problem areas. We also have an issue, not just with the snow plows, but with the cinders. That's like sandpaper and it really peels those stripes up quickly. I think the one by the State Center on Whipple is a good example. We just cannot keep paint on that thing. So we're looking at other options, but we do have some challenges just geographically because folks don't want to come up here and do $4,000 worth of paint.
Shane, could you go over with us the area that will be, you know, slurry sealed and then a little bit about the policy when people need to be off of there and how you'll notify everyone and kind of, you know, that they can't drive across it, you know, it doesn't dry in an hour and things like that, please?
You bet. So here's kind of the quick overview of where we're going to be applying it this year. Central Avenue from Olinen all the way down to Whipple. Olinen Road, which I understand is a very busy roadway, but needs to surface from Whipple, or no, I'm sorry, Wilford, from Whipple down to the highway by the movie theater. The City Park roadways will get slurry seal. Owens by the City Park, the subdivisions across from the City Park will get that as well. Sixth Street heading out to the treatment plant. Olinen Road between Central and Dusa Clubs and Fairway Park. The entire Fairway Park subdivision is in there as well. And Meadowview, 16th Avenue, and a couple spot areas in Pine Haven. The, it's on the contractor to block off the roadway, provide traffic control with flagging, with roping and barricades to keep people off there. You will see that. You'll get door hangers, a minimum of two days before they are in your area. They will give you a time or a day they will be in there doing the slurry seal. And typically, they will try to give you an idea on time. There's a number always on the flyer. If you have any questions, to contact the contractor directly, find out when he's gonna be there and if any changes are happening. The good, you did mention about the drying and this year we're actually, we're utilizing a polymer-modified asphalt emulsion. It's slightly different than the standard asphalt emulsion and it cures quicker. Cures a little quicker, doesn't have to wait to evaporate as long. But there still will definitely be some delays and some time where the roadways will be shut down, either half at a time or every other road with the subdivision, so people still have access. So you should get notified at least two days before they're in your area. And if you have any questions, either call the city or call, or start with the number on the flyer. If you're not getting response, call the city and talk to me.
Another question that I had is just maybe, you know, be aware. When I do these comparative bids and go through it, I was a little concerned about the fog seal pricing that the person we're awarding this to, you know, quoted. His rate per unit is about half of what some of the other, you know, people did. So I just want to make sure that we get a good quality fog seal on that road that we just finished. So that's just one that stood out with me that was quite a bit less. Everything else you can see in somebody else's quote, but that particular one was way under on the person we're giving this bid to. But just be aware and watch that. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kokavas?
Shane, could you describe the warranty period that is required within the bid documents, not only for the pavement and the seal, but for the paint?
You bet. So the warranty, our standard two-year warranty we carry with all of our other construction projects. We understand normal wear and tear happens, like snow plows will definitely wear on a surface a little bit. However, if we see any, some peeling up of this slurry seal or any bad areas that just don't stick, they didn't clean it properly. It's on them to sweep it and clean it before they put it down. It's a two-year warranty and they have to come back and repair it. And we'll call a warranty if we see an issue of it not being properly installed and lasting. You will see a little normal, a little, the top layer, you know, 3% of the rock usually goes off right away and snow plows are a little tough on it. But any construction issues or, you know, workmanship issues are addressed under the two-year warranty.
Okay, if there are no further questions, would you like to take it to motion to vote? Councilman Crittenden?
For Councilman Crittenden, I move to award the construction contract for the 2016 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadways slurry seal city of Cholo, project number R-0416 to Southwest Slurry Seal in an amount not to exceed $327,874.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Crittenden. Is there a second? Three seconds. On behalf of Councilman Alsop. Okay, is in there any discussion before we take it to a vote? Okay. All those in favor of? Say aye.
Raise your hand. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Did you vote? Yes?
Yeah.
It passed six to zero. Thank you. Okay, our next item is 8C, consideration of acceptance of construction of East Huning and North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project. City of Cholo, project number S 0316, and approval of change order. Begin with Shane Hemmenseau.
Thank you. City will receive federal STP funding to improve the East Huning and North 11th Street intersection. Not to interfere with the project scheduled for the summer 2016 to construct two new drainage box culverts at the intersection. The city had to realign the sewer main. The realignment project required installing two drop manholes to lower the sewer approximately three feet. Sewer main was to be replaced along 11th Street northward approximately 300 feet, 350 feet until positive grade could be restored. The project was publicly bid and was awarded to Rawling Specialty Contracting for $85,372.90. Prior to commencing construction, city crews alerted of possible drop inlet for the sewer main along 11th Street based on historic line cleaning information. After investigating the inside of the manhole, wastewater crews determined that the sewer main was shallower than anticipated in 11th and had an invert elevated from the manhole base. The invert was located in an angled section. The manhole was not visible from above. The result of the findings required replacing an additional 150 linear feet of sewer main to the intersection of 11th Street and Hall. At that location, positive grade could be reestablished. Understanding this work is required for the summer's proposed drainage improvements project, staff revised the construction plans and worked with contractor on a change order as mentioned in the recent city manager's memo to revise the project's scope to include the additional length. The change order was based off a unit price and already included in the original bid. The adjusted scope of work has been completed for a total cost of $104,061.22. Staff recommends accepting the East Huning-North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project, release the retainage, initiate the two-year warranty, and approve the change order for a total project cost of $104,061.22. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the council? All right, if there are no questions, we'll look for a motion. For Councilmember Kokavas, I move to accept the construction of the East Huning and North 11th Street Sewer Realignment Project, completed by Rawling Specialty Contracting, release the retainage, initiate the two-year warranty, and approve the change order for a total project amount of $104,061.22. Okay, we have a motion, Councilwoman Kokavas. Do we have a second?
I am seconding the motion for Vice Mayor Leach, sorry.
It is, I know.
All right, is there any discussion before we take it to a vote? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that passed six to zero.
Thank you, Shane.
Our next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of construction of wastewater treatment plant project and approval of change orders for contract cost reduction and extension of completion date by Bill Cupp.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and students. Before I start this on the recommended motion, I just wanted to add a clarification to that where it says I move to accept the construction of the wastewater treatment plant project. We need to say the PCL portion of the wastewater treatment plant project when the time comes for a motion.
PZL?
PCL.
I was hoping this was the whole cost of the project is what I was looking for.
We have a couple more pieces of the project that we're waiting on here.
The whole project for that.
$970,000 later.
Okay, at its October 21st, 2014 meeting, the city council approved the construction manager at risk, C Mar, contract with PCL Construction, Inc. for the site work portion of the new wastewater treatment plant project in the amount of $3,134,224. The contract's scope included grading and earthwork, underground piping, and below-grade structural concrete. At the March 17, 2015 meeting, upon design completion, the council amended the contract to include the remainder of the PCL's scope of work. The revised scope included electrical, mechanical, and piping, buildings, pumps, and process equipment installation. The contract amount was increased by $3,762,602 for a total price of $6,896,926. Two subsequent reductions of $12,500 and $45,846 reduced the actual contract amount to $6,837,480, which is $58,346 below the total not-to-exceed price approved by the council. PCL's work was subsequently, was substantially complete April 8, 2016, with a net project savings of $37,018 from the original C Mar contract. One of the goals of this project was to use local subcontractors and suppliers to the greatest extent possible. 47% of the subcontracted work was performed by local contractors. Additional scope items that were performed by local sources included removing the biosolids in the North Lagoon, $160,000, the backup generator, $103,000, and equipment rentals, about $20,000. About $1.8 million of the project went directly to local businesses. Other remaining project elements that were not part of PCL's scope of work included the operations and control building and the controls in SCADA. And SCADA, just for clarification, stands for supervisory control and data acquisition and that is the telemetry equipment that we can operate, remotely operate, and monitor the wastewater plant. PACE Advanced Water Engineering, the project's engineering consultant, has completed installing the controls in SCADA and is in the final stages of optimizing the plant's operations. And at a meeting soon to come, we'll have PACE's final payment and acceptance on an agenda as well. Staff plans to bid the ONC building shortly and hopes to provide additional opportunities for local contractors. There is also over $50,000 that remains unspent in an owner's contingency and these funds are anticipated to be additional project savings. Also, staff is working with Arizona Public Service on energy efficiency rebates and it appears that the project qualifies for over $50,000 in rebates. There is also a possibility of more depending on our actual energy use. So we will monitor our energy use over the next few months and compare it to past energy bills and if there is any savings, then APS does have some original refunds to give to the city. With that, staff recommends the project accept the PCL portion of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant project, approve change orders for a contract cost reduction of $37,018, and extending the completion date to May 3, 2016. Approve the final payment of $314,948.10 and begin the two-year warranty. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cupp.
Any questions from the council? Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll look for a motion.
For Councilman Hatch, I move to accept the construction of the new PCL wastewater treatment plant project, approve change orders for the contract cost reduction of $37,818, and the extending the completion date to May 3, 2016, approve the final payment of $3,014,948.10, and begin the two-year warranty.
Can you amend your motion to include the PCL construction portion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion with Council Hatch. Is there a second?
My seconded on behalf of Councilman Alsop.
Okay, any other discussion before a vote?
A comment, please. It's not very often that we get to sit here and get a cost reduction come before us. So thank you for that. Usually, the one before that, you want more, and it's nice to see that we can actually get a cost reduction that I'm sure we're going to spend somewhere, but thank you for that.
It was a lot of work. We had a great contractor, and that's how the construction manager at risk process is supposed to work.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, Councilman Hatch?
I'd like to add my thanks also to the fact that we managed to keep $1.8 million in our local budget, in our local spending. Thank you.
I know when we began this project, as one of our concerns, we saw other communities where they had done a waste treatment plant, and it was kind of really scary, some of the stories that we heard of, you know, some people with $5 million and $6 million overruns. We had one city that had to put another plant in, and it was like at the tune of $15 million. And so it was a little bit concerning, this being a $10 million project, but yet at the same time, both staff and the contractor, you know, kept to the budget. And I think you guys have done a great job. Hopefully, it'll work.
It is already working, so I'm happy to report.
I know it's working for my house.
Well, the government will give us another regulation next week, and, you know, hopefully not. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilmember Alsop?
Yeah, Bill, that was just, that was going to be my question, is how long we've had it up working, and is there house of flaws, or is everything working great with that thing? Or can you give us any insight of what's going on?
It's been running for about a month. We're still kind of in the incubation stage. We have to get all the bugs happy in there. We have, still don't have enough concentration of sludge to use our sludge press equipment. So that's kind of the last piece that we're working toward getting operational, and that's just based on the biology in the plant. So as soon as that happens, and it should be within the next few weeks, we'll be fully up and running. We're already meeting our permit requirement, so that's the good news.
And one last thing is, you know, I definitely want to thank staff for everything that's been done and making this project run. But I think we also need to thank some of the previous council members that's been up here for setting that money aside and making where we don't have to go out and borrow a lot of money to get this thing done. This is pretty close to a $10 million project, and I'm grateful that people had some insight on what we needed to do and saved taxpayers a lot of money in the long run. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Go ahead and like to call to a vote. I show of hands for approval of the...
Motion.
Motion? Okay, any opposed?
It's passed six to zero.
Okay, it's passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a summary of current events. Council members wishing to, and students wishing to share a little bit about current events.
Councilman Alsop wanted me to report on what we did today. And, well, we were partnered with the engineering part of Public Works, and we got to go around and we had to survey some of the sites that you're doing in Fairway Park. And so we got to experience that. And then after lunch, we went to, we went to the library, and we got to experience all the behind-the-scenes things that go on, the things that people don't realize. There's a lot more work than people think.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share?
Yeah.
Someone else wants to talk? Don't believe that.
Just a quick reminder, the Fourth Annual Sholo BBQ Throwdown and the city anniversary party is this Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00, 5:00-ish, somewhere in there. We have, I believe, 38 or 39 confirmed paid teams coming from all over the country. We're still working on one more. I've even offered to help him if I can get him here. So anyway, we're shooting for 40. We do have a contest that's just down the highway from us that only has 38. So if we get one more, all I want to do is beat that other contest. So come on out. It's free to the public. Kids' games, and the weather might be a little chilly, but we might have a couple fire pits out there you can stand by. If we can get Mrs. Bilby and Mr. Bilby to bring some firewood, we should be in good shape. Don't let them forget. Thank you.
Okay, we have some things going on at Sholo High School, too. Our softball team is in playoffs as well as our track. We have some members in a decathlon right now, and golf is going to be continuing going through next week. Our cheer tryouts are coming up, and spring football is starting next week. In addition to that, we also have Cougar Day coming up on May 19th and graduation on May 26th. With that, I'd like to turn over the time to the city manager.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. The Sholo Senior Center and Cafe is hosting a Cinco de Mayo party on this Thursday, May 5, from 11:00 to 1:00, with a Mexican food buffet for $8. To add on to what the Vice Mayor said about the barbecue throwdown, our anniversary, just so you know, there'll be barbecue tastings for sale at the event. There'll be food vendors, Free Kids Zone, live music, a four-on-four volleyball tournament, a 5K poker run, and we'll be sharing information about the regional geocaching event. If you want more information on that event and from our Parks and Rec Department, call 532-4140. And Arizona Department of Transportation has shared some information with us on two road projects in the area that they want us to share with the public and the council. The first began yesterday. It's a shoulder widening project on State Route 260 from Cheney Ranch to Bison Ridge. Hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be lane closures, except on Fridays and weekends. Delays will be kept to a minimum, and they anticipate that project to go into late July. The second involves some spot repairs on US 60 Dusa Clubs from south of the Rim Road. On the west, the intersection is State Route 77, which is Penrod Road on the east. Beginning next Monday, May 9, at 7:00 p.m., the contractor will work in the evening from 7:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. the next day. So they'll be working through the night to avoid some traffic problems there. Starting on Thursday, May 12, the contractor will apply a slurry seal throughout town in the daylight hours until 6:00 p.m. There, we want, they wanted to make sure the public's aware there could be 20-minute delays at intersections and driveways. The slurry seal project is scheduled to be completed on Friday, May 20. We know there will be some inconvenience with that, but we'll have a much better road after it's completed. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other items, or Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First thing, I'd like to thank Sholo High School for letting the kids be here tonight, and the staff for letting them work next to them this whole, today. And I think the kids, hopefully, from what I've been listening to, had a great time. But I also want to thank the mayor for giving the time for the kids to do this, and Ed for putting some stuff together, Jay Brimhall for going and talking to the students, mostly Mr. Whipple for putting them all together and getting them here and having a great time. And this has been, the thing's been going on for at least four years, and we want to keep it going. The kids have a great time, and the council has a great time. And I want to thank all the council members for letting the kids run everything tonight and have fun doing it, and just enjoy the time that they had. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Mr. Cupp?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add on to Mr. Mooters' report that the schedule for the work in the Dusa Club seems to be changing fairly rapidly, and any schedule updates will immediately be posted on the city's website. It may change tomorrow. So I just wanted to let folks know that these are the best dates that we have right now, but it is subject to change.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just a really quick comment. It's too bad we couldn't get the people that were doing the dues before the slurry seal to do some of our roads, because they were doing the, strike the Dusa Clubs, and then we're going to slurry seal right on top of it. So it's too bad they couldn't.
They have a problem with it lasting, too, see?
They were going to marry it the next week, though.
We do have a scheduling of a meeting or a discussion just briefly here. We recently sent out the EAS proposals. We can either have a meeting to discuss that again, or we can just send a letter like we did last year, and the EAS will choose who they're going to continue to represent. In about nine months, it'll be coming back for a formal contract for another extended time. So if it's nobody's druthers, if we're okay to just send a letter to, back to Washington, that's okay unless you want to meet on it. If anybody wants to meet, we can.
Is there any, is there a number of airlines that's doing it or requesting, or is just one, or?
There have been three people who have submitted bids, and the highest to lowest, but at the same time, they're the ones who choose, the EAS who chooses. We just would do a generic letter that we want to keep our essential air service, and the choice is theirs.
Okay. So in that letter, do we pick who we want?
No, we're just...
So we could get back the people we didn't want?
No. We can't discuss too much because, or we need to have a meeting, so.
If you have concerns, what I'd say is talk to the city manager, and we can address them in the letter. But we really can't discuss it tonight. But we can schedule a meeting if you really feel strongly about it.
I feel very strongly about it. I don't want...
Yeah, I do.
One thing to note is...
I don't know if I need a meeting, but I just...
Yeah. One thing to note is the contract is, I believe, from June for two years, and you'll be meeting with, there'll be new proposals, and you'll probably be having interviews next February or so. So this is kind of the end of the current contract.
I'll wait till then.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other items? All right, with that, I'll adjourn this meeting.
Good job.